Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, April 16th. We'll call the Wright County Board of Commissioners to order. It is 9:00 a.m. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It is a nice rainy Tuesday morning here in April, which we can use the rain. We'll begin here with the approval of the minutes. We have five sets of minutes here. We can either approve them individually or collectively. I will entertain a motion or corrections.
Mr. Chair. I have one error to be corrected. Page two of two on that committee of the whole from 48 to 24. First sentence should be, Catchmark said that the goals being proposed and discussed fit more for an organization that has been in existence for a year or two rather than a 30-year organization, and that change has been given to the minute taker.
All right. Any other corrections? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes with that recommendation, and if they would please stay whether approving them collectively or individually.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes with that one correction.
All right. I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland to approve minutes A, B, C, D, and E. Do I have any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Minutes are approved unanimously. Today's agenda, we have a few items here to petition on. One item we will add on is the approve the contract between the county and Woodseth for the Maple Lake out highway maintenance shop. And the other one is a to honor the Corrections Officers Week here in the first week in May. The resolution and the proclamation for that here has been distributed. With that, I will place the resolution for the correction officers as the first timed agenda item, and the Woodseth Maple Lake authorized contract we will put on for items for consideration under item number A, B, Woodseth, five. With that, do I have an approval or any other additions to the agenda?
Nothing further, sir.
All right. I will note that under the items for consideration, there was a distribution of some resolutions passed by some cities for the Wright County EDP that were a little bit late to game to making the packet, but just wanted to note that they were distributed. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shane.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Agenda is approved unanimously. Today's consent agenda, would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Item B is in Boy one for further discussion on the rezoning in Franklin Township.
B one, okay. If that'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda with the one item B one removed.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Consent agenda approved with item B one removed. Item B one, Commissioner Catchmark.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I spoke to staff, I spoke to township supervisor, and I read a lot of the comments, all the comments, and I know it's been several meetings, township, planning and zoning, Commissioner Holland is on that, and I had asked the staff ahead of time, could a slide be put up for those that haven't been heavily involved to show kind of the layout of that cul-de-sac now and the proposed housing? I'd like the board to see that one we're discussing. So a lot of the feedback that I read, and if you read the public comment from the citizens, is the anticipated traffic, keeping this as a cul-de-sac rather than a through street there. Now granted, it's 11 homes if you figure two cars a day and the trips that go with that, that's potentially 44 vehicle trips by extra that they don't have now. But what I also considered is that we have a landowner, that's a good picture right there, that one. So if you see the cul-de-sac, and to the left of that is where the proposed 11 homes are on both sides of the street, that's not there now. The cul-de-sac is off to the left now, they would extend that and add these 11 homes. Then off to the right, you see some buildings, that's a horse farm that happens to be owned by the same person that's proposing the development. So it seems, it was also spoken about, I'm sure Commissioner Holland remembers, but if it was a through street, it would go through that person's yard and property and be more intrusive on him and break up some of that traffic for the rest of the folks that are already there on the cul-de-sac that are speaking about the extra traffic. So I just want to call attention to who's benefiting from this is the developer and the landowner. The landowner's able to keep his farm and everything intact and develop kind of the back 40, and anything else that comes out of that is going to be extra traffic to the residents that are already there. That's my summary, Mr. Chair, if anybody wants to weigh in, but there was a lot of comment on that. Maybe Commissioner Holland, as a fellow decision maker that's been on those meetings and site visits, if you have anything to share.
Well, Barry, do you want to go first, or you want me to go?
Really, I mean, you have the minutes, you have all the plans. I really don't have a whole lot to share. There was a lot of discussion about, from the planning commission's end of it, whether this should or shouldn't be a cul-de-sac. Ultimately, what we got back from the township was they preferred it this way, they did not approve the through street. They basically approved this general concept three different times. We required the applicant to go back to the township on a number of occasions, and they came back with the same approval all three times.
Were they requesting a through street originally?
No.
No, there was never requesting a through street?
The two basic concepts of plans that we have is this one, which is the large farm parcel as a restricted parcel, which is the exact same way that the parcel to the south was developed, leaving the farm with a larger piece and then restricting that to any non-farm development. And that's also done in a number of other ones in this area. And then the other one was more of what we see standard for PUDs, which was common open space. In the end, the basic road design and cul-de-sac are the same on both plans. That's something that can be, you know, somewhat modified at the subdivision process, too. So whether it's, the final approval is this, that's not necessarily, it could go back to that open space concept, but that's what I got.
Commissioner Catchmark, are you asking, are you working to ask the board to deny this rezoning request? And if so, based on what grounds? I believe it meets, looking at all the information that I've reviewed, it meets all setbacks, it meets all the requirements for rezoning. I guess I don't know what, under what grounds we would be denying it, so.
No, that's a fair question. I just, I think it could go either way. I mean, not that the vote could go, you're going to win, you're going to lose, it'll be maybe split, but I just, I want to call more attention to it. The township supervisor that I spoke to, now this is only one, I didn't poll the whole board, but they saw this as a reasonable proposal for development, and that they would be able to work with the road either way. And I confirmed with them, because I know how some of these have gone in the past, where the developer is responsible for building the road to the standard. So that's not a cost to the township initially to build the road, but it is ongoing maintenance of the road then would be up to the township, which potentially, in this case, I think is maybe an extra 3,000 feet of road to come in from that landowner's property versus just extending the cul-de-sac that's there now. But I wanted to give time to the Commissioner Holland that's been serving on both boards, because, kind of put myself in your shoes, so I really want to hear and understand, because there were some good cases, and I think that it could go either way to where then it's a business decision by the developer if he wants to pursue the through-street road or not, and that could be a business decision of his.
Well, we, it came forward to us, this has been ongoing, I don't know, Barry, six months? I feel like it's been, for sure, every month. The people that originally bought on that cul-de-sac, that was the design. They knew that eventually that cul-de-sac was going to be there, correct, Barry? And then it was an afterthought to put in the road, because at first, when they came to add those few to round out the cul-de-sac, the residents were upset, and then they did put in a road, like, and did a cost analysis, and the township said no, because of it was too close to the river, and it had a lot of, like, retaining wall, which would be very costly for township to maintain. And so it's not feasible to make the road go through there. And then the residents had said that they, you know, if the road went through, that they would maintain it, but not understanding that, how much it would cost to maintain it. I said, you know, at the meeting, you know, people have a hard time paying for that little bit of, you know, when they get assessed, when the cities go in, I said, I've been to many city council meetings where they go in and they have a little assessed area in front of their house, and they don't like the fee of it. If they would have had to also maintain that stretch of the road, I don't think they understand the price for 11 homeowners to actually maintain that road, because the township has no interest in maintaining that road, the extension.
Okay. So, thank you, Commissioner Holland. When you initially started, you said that the residents that are already there knew about the cul-de-sac coming, or, I mean, this cul-de-sac has been there since they moved, pretty much, right? There was, it was a dead-end street. So what did they know about the future before six months? Are you saying when they signed on and built some 15 years ago, that there was some type of a mock plan that was shared with them, or did they find out about this all six months ago also?
Well, it's, the general concept of development and the way our ordinances and subdivision regulations are designed is the way that southern property was developed. So if you, if you're a budding property that can be developed, the preference is, and what we generally require, is that they provide something similar, a dead end with a temporary cul-de-sac to allow development to take place without automatically requiring additional cul-de-sacs. So if you don't do it the way it was done to the south, then things get messier. And so, you know, from a planning standpoint, we like to see dead ends in a development when property near it or next to it is also something that can get developed at some point in time, so it can make for better developments, better through streets where possible. Not saying that's always possible, not saying it's impossible here, but there again, I'm not the road authority, and based on the information we received back from Franklin, this was the development and how they wanted to see it laid out. That doesn't necessarily mean those property owners asked, but it's all out there, and if we were asked before, well, can the property to the north be developed? Well, it's in our plan, there's a dead end there, this is a possibility, but there's no way for us to notify everybody that goes to build what's possible all around them unless they ask.
And Mr. Chair, and those are good points, I recognize that. I'm just going by what Commissioner Holland said, that the existing residents knew that this was coming, and so then I have to ask, how did they know? Other than, if you look at the end of the street, well, geez, someday someone could propose something, because our planning and zoning says that it's set up that way. But nobody told them specifically, when you folks are going to build, the plan in five or 10 years is for this to happen, and that didn't happen, at best we can tell.
Well, and isn't there, there's also a couple other developments in Franklin Township with the same concept, with a cul-de-sac? Wasn't there?
Lots of them.
Yes. So it seems to be the preference of the township to have those cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
So with that, Commissioner Holland, do you have any reason or cause to want to change your original thoughts on the approval of this rezoning?
No.
All right. Are you comfortable with where we're at on it, Commissioner Catchmark? Call for a vote.
I'll let someone make the motion. I'm not going to go with it. I think the owner should have more skin in the game and the developer, too. But that's no ill will to anybody, that's just being a voice for what I read, and I respect everyone else's decision and plan, so carry on.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Holland?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
All right. The rezoning is approved for one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now at this time, we're going to call Mr. O'Malley here to the podium, and we are going to honor the great work that our corrections officers here in Wright County do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ford, appreciate the time, thank you for letting me petition onto the agenda. First, I'll start by reading the proclamation. Correctional officers and employees are capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals. They serve admirably in the correctional facilities all across the country as chaplains, teachers, counselors, supervisors, managers, and directors. They help keep our citizens and communities safe. Correctional officers and employees teach, train, mentor, preach, and cure. Though the job of correctional officers and employees is often very challenging and at times stressful, the thousands who work in the correctional profession every day perform their duties well and with great pride. They are brave, courageous, and tenacious individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep the public safe and provide a multitude of services to the nation's offenders. They have a tremendous responsibility and are owed our nation's gratitude. Wright County correctional officers are most deserving of our respect, our thanks, and the highest praise. They are well-trained, always on watch, prepared to meet any challenge. The men and women working the sheriff's office jail division make a difference in our communities. They work with and manage more than 4,000 offenders a year in our county. Our Wright County corrections officers are also role models who give guidance and hope to those who are ready to make changes in their lives. On behalf of the sheriff and the sheriff's office command staff, we commend those who serve in the correctional profession. Resolution reclaiming May 5th through the 11th of 2024 as Correctional Officers and Employee Week in Wright County. Whereas correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining a safe correctional facility, ensuring the public safety, and whereas correctional officers are essential to the success of our criminal justice process, and whereas correctional officers' work include daily exposure in hostile environment with some of the most dangerous individuals in our society, and whereas correctional officers and employees provide offenders with direction, hope, and a new focus while assisting with reentry and outside life, and life outside of corrections. And whereas, therefore, our correctional officers and employees rise to meet any challenge and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Wright County Board of Commissioners, do hereby acknowledge the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024 as Correctional Officers and Employee Week in honor of the dedicated professionals who serve the citizens of Wright County by supervising the county's inmate population.
Thank you, Captain O'Malley.
Thank you for the time.
We have an amazing staff of correction officers here in Wright County, and your office has done an amazing job in dealing with the difficult situations, especially in light of the mental health crisis in our community. I think you're housing more of them than they probably should at times, but unfortunately, it's the reality of the world we live in.
It is, and it's changing rapidly, and it's, yes, it is a challenging thing, and it's becoming more challenging every day. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Dietrich.
I just want to thank you that you emphasize training and professionalism, and that the people that work under you treat the people on their worst days with such dignity and respect. I just want to thank you for that.
That's why we have so few problems. We have problems, don't get me wrong, but so few that make the news or get blown up, so it is because of our officers, the way they handle people, the way they treat people, the way they deal with people, and our supervisors that watch those officers and making sure that everybody is treated with dignity.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Catchmark.
Thanks again for coming over, and it's good to see your support staff over here also to recognize it. Did you bring any more guests to the facility with, other than the one in the corner back there?
No, we've left them all, left them all over there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to declare May 5th through the 11th as Correction Officer Employee Week in Wright County.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, Commissioner Catchmark.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Do you want to picture it all or anything?
I think they did that last time, we went over there, yeah. Okay. Thank you. We'll set up a time to come over and be able to maybe get some pictures with some of the staff.
We'll be there.
All right. Very good. We hope so. We might have bigger issues otherwise. All right. At this time, we have the timed agenda item. Mr. Matt Detchin is going to make his way to the podium. The first one we have here is to accept the multi-purpose drainage management grant for the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources for County Ditch 19.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So I just want to cover the first two items, because they are the same grant, just in different fiscal years, and I really just want to highlight all the work that the Wright Soil and Water Office did on these grants. This grant funding pool is $1 million for the state total, and as you can see, we got quite a bit of that funding, and that would not be possible without Luke and his team. So I just really want to thank them and all the work that they put into this. As you can see today, for the first item, you are accepting the grant, but the Wright Soil and Water actually applied on our behalf, so that also adds additional administrative and tracking work to their staff that already has quite a few projects going on, as we know. So that's just another thing that takes resources off Wright County staff.
So I just want to make sure I'm wrapping my head around this. So you're telling me we got 70% of the granting available in the state?
That's what, I think it's the same fiscal year funding, so.
71, 71 and a half percent, which I, my head is, so I was wrapping my head around it, it's pretty hats off to.
It's impressive. There were other applications, so our application had to be that much better for them to allow that much funding to come to one county, so it was honestly a great job.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Luke, is this in-house expertise at writing these, or do you have a pro service that's involved, too?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that, it's all in-house, so it's with our staff and Matt, and Matt is underselling his efforts on this, too. So he's, without Matt, and all the work he's putting in this, we wouldn't have been able to get these either, or the support from the county board and the S W H E D board, so. But no, we didn't go outside for these applications. Some we do, but this one we did all in-house with Matt's assistance as well.
Well, thank you. I even give more credit for that. I think that's really a showing of what you can do with, over there, combining with Matt, and it was a good effort, so thank you.
Oh man, maybe we should have Soil and Water and Matt write our border-to-border grant applications, and maybe we can have broadband every house in Wright County, if you guys can get 70% of that pot of money.
You'd be buying a lottery ticket. So yeah, so the first item is to accept the grant for $215,000 for County Ditch Number 19, which we will also discuss later in the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Shane, to accept the multi-purpose drainage management grant in the amount of $215,000 for County Ditch 19.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a comment on that, just that that will help offset costs as we make improvements to that ditch, is that's how that will?
Yeah, yeah. Both of these projects target, you know, sediment and erosion, so the less erosion we have coming to the ditch, the less need for maintenance there is.
And so those improvements that are made with this grant won't be, I don't know, benefit, they won't be distributed to the homeowners or anything of those costs.
Yeah, so, yeah, both these grants do require a 10% match, but for one, we have federal funding, and in another one, we have our general ditch allocation funding, so neither of the grants will have any assessment to the benefit of landlords.
That's the right word, assessment. Thank you.
So with that, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Next would be the second one, which we've kind of already overviewed on it, which would be to accept the multi-purpose drainage management grant in the amount of $500,000 for Joint Ditch 15. Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner, um.
Second that.
Catchmark, and second by Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The grant is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, to review a repair request submitted by a benefited landowner on County Ditch Number 30.
Yeah, now that we've added dessert, now. Yeah, now that we've had our dessert, now we have to eat our veggies, right? Yeah, so we received a repair request on County Ditch number 30. The landowner did work with a previous ditch inspector, Mike Young, that was not able to find the survey, but he stated that Mike surveyed the ditch and there was a culvert that was three feet too high that he was looking to lower, and it's actually on a neighboring property. So that was his repair request. Biggest concern with this one, anytime you're working lowering culverts, digging a ditch, especially on a ditch system like this that has a large wetland complex upstream, you need to do a lot of surveying and regulatory prep work before that can be done. Obviously, if we lower that culvert by three feet, that could have a substantial impact to that wetland complex upstream. So our recommendation is to get direction from the board, but also to get approval for completing a reestablishment of records where we would survey that ditch and find what the legal ditch bottom is.
So Mr. Detchin, we don't have ASBILs on this one. This is one of the few that we weren't able to find in that box, huh?
Yeah, it went through an improvement in 1984, so I was hopeful, you know, it's relatively recent that I would have that, but they do not have a profile drawing or an ASBIL drawing, so unfortunately.
Mr. Chair. And for the rest of the board, and if I understand this right, that we're going by basically a past philosophy on how this private crossing is built as opposed to the way it would be if it happened today. And can you share that? Because that's, it's a, it's a big difference from now in our consideration here, but go ahead.
Yeah, so obviously, we've discussed quite a length, you know, drainage line and private crossings. If they're done as a part of a project and approved as that, a part of the ditch, then the maintenance of those private crossings is done and assessed to all the benefit of landowners. And that's what happened in this case when they did that improvements in 1984. Four crossings across the ditch were all done as a part of the project. So then at that, from that point on, they're all considered infrastructure as a part of the ditch and would be maintained and and assessed across all the benefit of landowners.
So the difference if it happened today is that we would assess the landowner only that has the private crossing, which makes, right?
Yeah, or notify the landowner that they need to lower their crossing and then it would be on their own expense.
Which seems more fair because no one else is getting the benefit of this private crossing, hence it's a private crossing. If they want to call it a public street, then you can bill and anyone can use it. But this was because of a past philosophy decision on this that we can change going forward. And in my district, when we talk anyway, these are handled by the private landowners for the crossings and they've already resisted and said, hey, in the past, everybody paid for these. Well, sorry, it's a change now. And that's for the rest of whoever you've got ditch projects in your area, but just something to consider. But I think if we can't find the records, we can't just go by hearsay or a landowner that, you know, unfortunately benefits, so are we just gonna take their word for it? I think that's where this extra cost is gonna be to go over again, maybe repeat the effort, but we can't verify the records, so I, in my opinion, we have to verify them before we okay the lowering.
Do we have bid sum with the cost for the engineering to get the ASBILs would be roughly?
To do the survey portion of that? Yeah, after approval on this, I was gonna reach out to engineers or surveyors to get quotes for that.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have an idea what it's gonna be, but okay, just hear yourself. It's been a few years since we've had to do one, so I don't know what it costs in today's market to get the surveying done for that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ketchmark, just to follow up on the comments that have been made here. I believe that a reestablishment of records is needed. It's a legal proceeding. It gives us a legal baseline of what the ditch bottom would be, and I think as part of that process, we can ask the engineer to also look at private crossings and to review those records as well to go back historically and see how they got there, when they got there, and going forward, what the legal process should be as part of that process.
And you're doing it for the entire system, so this way in the future, we have the ASBILs or reestablishment of records, so therefore we don't have to ever do this again. So
Yeah.
We can, we can adjust culverts as necessary based on that information going forward, so.
Yeah, because we were able to find a repair report. A repair report typically should have a a profile drawing and then after that, an ASBIL drawing. This one just doesn't. It just states the work that was involved and then me and staff, I had to follow up and review old assessments that happened on that ditch from the 80s to verify that those culverts were, you know, not just proposed, but were paid for by the ditch. And that's what I'm seeing based on the engineer's report and what the costs are for the total project.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So the question I think that Commissioner Ketchmark was bringing up is could we change how that, how the culverts are and to be assessed with this project?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dietrich, I would prefer to answer that question after we get the reports back from the engineer. We possibly could, but I don't want to go on the record here and say affirmatively we could, but I'd rather see the records and see what the ASAC grade comes back and see what their final report indicates before making that final call.
All right, with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to to move forward with the reestablishment of records for County Ditch number 30.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchmark.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Last two item here would be to schedule a ditch committee of the whole to discuss potential next steps on repairs for County Ditch 19.
Yeah, so I, we obviously went through the redetermination of benefits of County Ditch 19. I gave you guys one of these huge folders just on some of the history and repair requests and some other information on County Ditch 19. So we are looking to follow up with that and proceed with next steps. I did have, I believe it was May 7th at 8:00 AM originally. Staff, we reviewed that and we are recommending May 8th at 10:30 AM for the committee of the whole. And that was just to provide you with an option for dates.
Works for me, Mr. Chair.
Which one?
May 8th at
10:30.
10:30.
All right.
And this is a District 5 combined with Commissioner Dietrich's, right?
All right, so entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, for May 8th, 10:30 here.
All right, we have a motion to set a ditch committee of the, is it of the whole then, or are we doing it for just the two? I just, I see of the whole, but then I didn't know if you were, you just mentioned there that it was gonna be you and Commissioner Dietrich.
No, I'm mentioning that for reference that for sure, we should be here, but just so people geographically know where in the county it falls. And, but I'm always in favor of the whole group for this if they're interested, but for sure, Commissioner Dietrich and I, that it would work for us.
Works for me. That's, all right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Ketchmark to set May 8th as a ditch committee of the whole for repairs and next steps on County Ditch 19 at May 8th at 10:30 AM. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Ditch committee of the whole is set unanimously. Thank you. Barry is still in here. We have action on ordinance, amending ordinance 24-2 under Wright County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155, on zoning at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an application that was based off an application by a resident to amend the R2 zoning district to allow non-commercial contractors' yards as an interim use. The item was heard by the planning commission. The planning commission has set forth a resolution recommending denial of that request.
This request has far-reaching implications that if we opened up this box and did this rezoning request, our R2 districts could look vastly different than they do right now, and I strongly believe that we would get a large amount of complaints based on changing in allowing such uses in R2 districts. So I'm in favor of the denial of such amendment.
I'll accept the denial of the amendment brought forth.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich?
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, it's a resolution. It's on page 133 of the packet. It'd be a motion to approve the resolution in order for denial of ordinance amendment number 24-2, a proposed amendment to ordinance 155.050, parenz R hyphen 2, end parenz.
I will amend my motion to what he said, please, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland to, for a resolution denying ordinance amendment 24-2 pertaining to Wright County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155 regarding zoning. Is that correct?
That'd be correct, Mr. Chair.
All right, with that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, Commissioner Shane?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, items for consideration. We have a number of recommendations coming forward here. The first would be the recommendations from the county board workshop. If there's any particular items that anybody wants to discuss, otherwise largely, a lot of them were informational only. There was a few recommendations regarding the recycling center, the building advisory group, and the law enforcement training center in those municipal contracts with cities. So at this time, I will entertain any questions, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Shane?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland to approve the county board workshop recommendations from April 9th. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. County board workshop recommendations approved unanimously. Please note, Commissioner Ketchmark had to step out. We just approved the recommendations from the workshop on April 9th. They're all pretty much informational. You didn't have any concerns?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next would be the April 9th border-to-border, or no, border-to-border, the broadband committee meeting and the update on our border-to-border. The recommendation was the consensus of the committee was to make the following recommendations, which was to negotiate with Charter and Midco projects, areas to remove overlapping. The, we are finding out that we are potentially harming ourselves in supporting two ISP providers in the same area in which case the border-to-border would like us to work with those ISP providers to make sure that they are, is only one ISP provider applying for particular areas and that we would be help facilitating in supporting those, so.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Dietrich?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland to approve the recommendations from the broadband committee on April 9th. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next would be to approve the recommendations from the aggregate tax fund. The recommendation was to approve the suggested aggregate material product tax reserve fund offering committee changes as outlined in the document. The document is included. Any discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a comment. This was a three-member community board besides the two commissioners and due to some correspondence glitch, a couple didn't make the meeting, so, but they're still interested and it was no fault of their own. But you saw the slight changes and there were no other complaints on, on how the program ran in the past year. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Any other discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, recommendations approved unanimously. All right, the fourth item here was the April 8th committee of the whole regarding the Wright County Economic Development Partnership. The recommendation was to discuss the county's 2024 economic development funding at today's county board meeting, which will be the next item up on our agenda. I don't believe that there's any action that needs to be taken on that one as it's there's
It's done.
Yeah, it's done. All right, which brings us to our next item on discussion. I'm gonna bring up Assistant Administrator Clay.
Yeah, thank you, Chair and Board members. So early 2024, the board directed staff to bring forward for conversations three times throughout the year, the funding for the Wright County Economic Development Partnership. And as you just heard in the committee of the whole from last week, the direction was to bring that forward to this meeting. So just a brief bit of background on this, thus far in 2024, the county has not sent any of our budgeted dollars to the Economic Development Partnership thus far. The county did budget $120,000 for the EDP in 2024. Included in your packet was information that was requested of the EDP to bring forward, which is just information about their goals, about their organization, and then they included some resolutions of support from cities in there as well. So really, at this time, what we're looking for as staff is direction of how to proceed forward with funding the EDP. And then also note that there are a number of members of staff and board members from the EDP in attendance today if there are specific questions. So staff's just looking for that direction today and if, I'd be open if you have any questions.
So board members, we've, we've discussed this at great length on numerous meetings, on goals, and we've discussed operations. I think everybody's very, very acclimated with the EDP and its operations, at least at this point, based on the number of conversations that we've had. I do know you, all of you have probably been reached out to by numerous entities or individuals, because I know I have, so I can likely believe that all the rest of you have. I first off want to say that I'm hoping we can find a way to move forward here with the EDP. The EDP as an organization has good value. You can't get the economy a scale where you can take multiple government agencies and private businesses, mold them together and be able to leverage that, those dollars and those volunteer efforts to really holistically go after economic development and a business in working to create a business climate that is beneficial for all parties involved in bringing us forward and trying to achieve a goal now and in the future that, that meets the desires of both the public and private together. Is there bumpy road sometimes in those paths? Absolutely. And I think we maybe found some of those, but I'm, I'm hoping that we can work our way through that. And I believe we've worked our way through some of it. Are we exactly where we want to be? No. But I believe where we're at right now is actually holding us back, especially by not moving the funds forward. We need to, they need to be able to have the funds so they can make decisions and knowing where they're going in the future. So I'm, at this point, want to ask the board what we need to do to be able to make that happen.
Chair.
Yes.
I do want to say that I, I see great value in the EDP. But right now, I would like to make a motion to hold funding until the July 2024 to reevaluate funding at that time. Just because I don't see the same, I don't, I don't feel like the same strategic values are matching up.
So your motion is to just send no money until July of 2024? Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, could I clarify the motion? Does that mean that it will be open for the same type of discussion that we scheduled for today at that date? It's just a delay of game?
Yep.
That would be my, my guess, but.
I just want to be clear that we got all the expectations of July comes around. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ketchmark. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a lot of points and as you said, we all got a good understanding through a lot of meetings and different things. If, I want to throw out there what we haven't heard before for consideration. And we did this with Historical Society, but I did some figuring on some in-house finance and admin work that's been done, that's not been accounted for in any appropriation like we brought up with Historical Society. And where I'm at is around $3,000. So I'll ask for July then that staff continue to track any time that is spent on that, so that if the board chooses to give some funds, that I think some math should be done to consider what kind of money has already been spent. We did it for Historical on IT support. We did it for historical on IT support, and I think snow plowing and maybe something else to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars that was never accounted for, and now it is. So to be fair, I just want to keep that going. If there is some efforts that we don't know about, and then I'm going to ask that, I hope there's minimum effort that, from here to July to make it simpler. But, so that's where I'm at for the discussion and the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Catchmark.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dietrich.
Um, real quick, last year during budgeting season, we did agree to the appropriations based on the meetings that we had. We had a meeting and, and got the priorities, worked with staff, with the EDP, and they never got their funding. And, and we also add an additional commissioner to the board with that, so that your voices can be heard to, to express your priorities, which I've heard you, you know, we've discussed. And I, I guess I feel frustration that we haven't kept to our word when it came to, as we move forward, that, that they have a, they're running a nonprofit that benefits over eighty businesses in the, in the county. Every city is a, is a partner with the EDP. We get feedback, they work with DED, they work with all the communities, the businesses. I've, I've, yes, everything can be worked better on, but I think we have a good thing going. And to then now push this out into July, we can be working with them as, as we move forward, like we have been. But to say no more funding until July, with, with the wages that we, what we provide is seventy percent of their budget. I mean, that's hard, that's a hard for any business. Let's just take away seventy percent of their budget and, and try to operate. I just, I just disagree.
So Commissioner Dietrich, to your point, I look at by saying we're not giving them any money till July of twenty twenty-four, you're, so you're starving them out essentially. And with that being said, you're going to measure them on their efforts in, in the interim period of time in which you're, in the interim period of time, you're starving them out. I, I only see that that is, it's only going to point in the direction that you're not going to like the efforts that they have, because you're not giving them any funds to be able to do anything, but yet you have expectations for them. I, I don't necessarily know that those two are going to equal a, a product that, that you're going to like, which is going to in turn probably result in defunding them holistically altogether. I guess to my point is, where is the, what's the direction that the, the board wants to go? What needs to be done for something to actually happen?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to address that starving out comment and the funding, and tie it to these resolutions that we got, all identical. I don't know who drew them up or what the background was, but it's very interesting that all these entities that want to support the EDP never come forward and say, we understand the financial burden right county, we really believe in this organization to the tune that we're not going to only give nine hundred dollars, we're going to give, we're going to put an extra zero behind the nine and ease that financial burden, or whatever you want to call it, to Wright County. All we get is resolutions saying, please continue the funding. We talked about goals, the goals have differed between Wright County, the Wright County Board, the EDA, the EDP, and the cities. The one common goal, and we've had a lot of conversation about goals, is we got to get that money from Wright County every year. That from previous boards and all the other entities is the one common thing that I've seen, to the tune of over three hundred thousand. Now with this, another one twenty, we're going to get close to half a million. And I have to ask the question if the benefit matches the payment of taxpayer dollars to that, and, and I don't think it does, but my compromise is that I'm giving it, I guess to your, your comment of putting them on life support till July, but I'm not voting to abolish. It can be supported by someone else also. There's other people with other checkbooks out there, not just us. So I just want to clear that up, because we have a lot of the folks in the room that are very interested.
Chairman Vetch, on the same, on the same note, you're right. I, I'm getting quite frustrated that our staff is having to backfill, and I feel like our voice in that realm is not being heard. And it was interesting that in my two cities that support the EDP, when the biggest city in Wright County came to me, that the hit, the administrator came to me and said, what is this resolution? Why are you going to cancel out the EDP? And I say, I have no desire to cancel out the EDP. I said, but I think our strategic visions aren't the same, so he didn't send a resolution. His city, he didn't make his city sit down with false information. And that, those, these resolutions that came in were like the final straw for me. I'm, instead of going and getting more businesses, like Mike said, or have cities pay more, it's having people email, having people call, having resolutions, and not going out and getting more eighty, eighty businesses. We could have eighty businesses right in Odd Seago St. Michael together. And yet, we have only eighty businesses for all of Wright County, and, and it, and it's a minimal fee for them to be involved. So I, until, till I see more skin in the game, I'm just not for, and like Mike said, every time our staff's going to be backfilling, I, I want a bill.
So, Commissioner Dietrich, go ahead.
Well, I just going to say, we had directed as a board for Clay to work on the measurable goals that we had requested with those meetings. So I, I'm, and we have an EDA, which, you know, we work together with the EDP on those things, so I'm, I'm struggling to understand what, what you're talking.
Oh, Chairman Vetch, it is not Clay's. I'm not, not Clay, not Clay, other staff time.
So my biggest piece that you got to understand is the EDP chose a, a county funding piece largely because of it wanting to be, not have the perception that it is benefiting one city or one business more than another, is the, the commonality is that we all live in Wright County, and that being the pretense as to why the county was the largest funder of the organization. So, and, and it serves a lot of purpose to it. The biggest piece that has changed that, that we've really struggled is that the county has, over time, especially over the last short period of time, right prior to COVID, the county has doubled its investment into the organization. But the part that was missed with it was that we didn't have a conversation with us doubling our investment into the organization. What is it that we had from an expectations and return? And then COVID hit, and we never ever came back to having that conversation. And we, and during that meantime, we created our own Economic Development Authority here at the county. We started reaching out to our stakeholders, and now we have kind of gotten our own goals here from our own Economic Development Authority, and we are trying to meet them, but we have our, right now, our funds. We don't, we don't put nearly as much into our own EDA as we do into the EDP, so we are using, trying to meet our EDA goals through the EDP. And they, we have to have a conversation about how is this going to work together? Because in order for us to fund the organization at that hundred and twenty, hundred and forty thousand dollars, whatever that dollar amount may be, we have to make sure that the EDP is helping us to meet our stakeholder goals, because our stakeholders, whether anybody believes it or not, are the same stakeholders of the EDP. I think we can get there, but there, we have to have some more open dialogue to it, and I think it's largely because the conversation didn't take place when it should have.
Mr. Chair, is there a question on the reserve funding that Mike kind of alluded to, the dollar amount that they still have in reserves?
They've been using some of their reserve funds. I would have to bring Jolene up to it. I think there's around a couple hundred thousand dollars that's in there. Is that sound about correct?
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I just want to direct it back to a lifeline. As far as the funding, that you're saying that we're cutting them dry right here.
But is it at the best use of their funds? I mean, that's the, the end of the day, that, those funds were ideally put for long-term strategic initiatives, but now they are using it to just meet general operational expenses instead of actually using them for mid and long-term strategic initiatives, which would actually yield some sort of benefit, but in the meantime, they are just using them for, to keep the lights on, so there's not as much value with that, because at this point, your organization is looking to pivot.
But again, we're, you know, exactly where it came from, and why we've been limping this along for the last year. And I'm, I'm not against the EDP, I just feel that we're trying to get what everybody's needs to get this accomplished, and that's why I called that meeting last week, so that we could all get on the same page.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And that's where I would agree, as we continue to work through this year to fully fund them, so that we can attain those goals, and we can make the suggestions and changes that you need, that are needed, and we delve into what next year looks like, and that can be that conversation on who pays what, or increases, that's, that's all part of those conversations, but for now, we had committed funds for the EDP for this year.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to call the question, because everybody up here, the decision-makers, have had a chance to, to speak. We've got a first, a second, and discussion.
All right, the question's been called. We had a motion to hold any funding to the EDP till July twenty twenty-four. Just for clarity, that means, I guess, we wouldn't revisit, revisit the discussion till July, essentially, then I would be, is that my?
Yep.
Interpretation, okay. With that, the, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes three-two. All right, at this time. I would encourage at this time, Board members, to at least have some dialogue with the EDP on what it's going to take to, to move forward, if there is the desire to move forward with the EDP, so that there is some chance of some sort of a resolution come July.
I would definitely open my door to that conversation, because I do not want this to go downhill. I want this to progress forward, so I would open that completely.
Thank you. All right. All right. At this time, we have the, acknowledged the date and time for the Oso Fund, County Board of Appeals and Equalization. The recommended or suggested date would be Monday, June seventeenth at four o'clock, and.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as noted, we had put a placeholder on that and communicated that date out, just wanted to make sure that it was on the board's radar, so just kind of a follow-up item for today.
I like how you put four and nine PM, so we're having two meetings at night, one at four and one at, and at nine. It's.
There's a period of time we have to have it held open for, so.
I hope we're not meeting again at nine, it's four to nine. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? All right, motion passes unanimously. Second would be to schedule a board retreat for May sixth. This is a great opportunity that we get to do annually, and this is with the goal of getting an understanding of the forecasting and developing priorities prior to going into the Oso Fund robust budgeting time of year over the summer. Commissioner?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to be out of town on the sixth. I'm wondering if we can move that to the seventh, maybe after the county board regular meeting, or we already got the committee of the whole on the eighth, but wondering if we can do that on the seventh instead.
We can move the, probably move the seventh one to the eighth and do the, so do the.
So, Mr. Chair, a couple thoughts. Currently, we have the board meeting, of course, that morning, a closed session scheduled following the board meeting at ten thirty. We could look at either moving the closed session or having this meeting, the retreat at one o'clock in the afternoon, if that would work as well.
I vote one.
On the seventh?
Yeah, you go one o'clock on the seventh. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Because we're calling this a retreat, does this mean that it's just this then? Is that, or who is our audience? Do we get finance there?
Yes, it was planned to be administration and finance to go over the, kind of the forecasts as we best have information at that time, some of the impacts that we know are going to be impacting the budget, also give you the opportunity to prioritize items for next year's budget, so.
Okay, and that'll be here in this building?
We talked about using Nye, Nye Park.
I'm, I'm not interested. We got a fifty million dollar building, plenty of conference rooms. I see no need to go over there. We can secure ourselves in the back, but I'm not interested in going to Nye Park.
Whichever, that's fine, I'm not.
I can't do any work between here and there in the commute. I just, I, I'm retreated out with that kind of thing.
Yeah, there's no facilitator, there's nothing of that nature. This is purely just an opportunity for us to talk through the process.
Yeah, I'm all for it, Mr. Chair, but let's use what we got.
But we do have, we do, we do own Nye Park, it is a county park.
Well, we do, but there, like I said, I can't do any work between driving there and back, and I just, am I the only one? I guess we can take a photo.
I'd like Nye Park, I mean, it's, they have it set up there, it's nice, and it's, we have windows.
Mr. Chair, I'm more concerned about having the meeting than the location.
Right.
It's the least of my concerns.
Right.
All right. I'll make a motion that we have it here.
Okay.
On that date and time.
Mike, I'll give you a ride. You can work all the way there.
Yeah, there you go.
You can go afterwards and walk around. All right. I made a motion for it, do we need?
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll have a second.
Okay. We have a second, all right. So we are setting the retreat on May seventh at one PM here in the Government Center. The location within the Government Center to be determined, is that fair enough?
Sure.
Okay, I just, I think true.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was going to, I was going to give you a hard time, because if I said the third floor, you might not be able to get, sorry, I was going to give you a hard time.
I'll take it, I'll take it. On the record, I took it from Mr. Chair.
It's just too fun, I know, but you. You were going to give them a zine service from Commissioner Shane, though. I mean, that's.
That would have been good.
That would have been nice. I know she hasn't even offered to get, so I could get work to and from, pick me up on my way in here.
I'll buy, I'll drive the big red van.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shane, I was hoping it was going to be the Harley and, Commissioner Catchmark, would you grab it out in the back?
I would, I would like to see him on his laptop on the back of Harley, that would be, that would be a good meme for a.
Be a good picture.
All right, with that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? All right, now we are moving the, was going to be May seventh for the Budget Committee of the Whole, but we're probably moving that to the eighth, I'm assuming?
That was the thought, sir, yes.
Okay, one o'clock still, or what is the eighth? I don't know what that date.
The ditch is at ten thirty, so.
So you want to go right at eleven?
The afternoon's bad for me. If we're done by noon, twelve-thirty, I'm good, I don't know.
Is there some reason we can't do it at nine, do it before that?
No, that's fine.
Nine's?
Yeah. I don't know how much time we're thinking.
Yeah.
For the budget, for the?
Budget, forget, hour and a half, is that going to give you enough time?
That's for everybody, right?
Yeah.
Quick, turn around.
I don't know, I'd rather not be rushed, I mean.
Well, an hour and a half is, is a, and if we're a little, ten minutes after that, the ditch committee, if it starts at ten forty, it's not going to be the end of the world, so. I, I think.
Nine o'clock.
We'll be chewing up those numbers on the day before anyways.
Yep.
Nine o'clock on the eighth.
All right, so we have a motion by, is that a motion, Commissioner? All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark to set a Budget Committee of the Whole at nine AM on, sorry, Wednesday, May eighth, here in the Government Center.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? All right. And the last one, an item that was petitioned on coming out of yesterday's Transportation Committee of the Whole, to be able to move forward so we can get bidding documents sooner than later, was to move forward with the contract with Woodset and Wright County to, for the highway maintenance shop.
Yes, Mr. Chair, can speak to that. I do have copy of the document if anyone from the public would like to view it. It is thirty-plus pages, so I did not make full copies, but did provide you with the digital yesterday, as we did discuss that it's Transportation Committee of the Whole. So this would allow us to move forward, knowing this is the busy season, and get the advance moving on a few weeks towards moving the project forward, so that's why it's brought today for discussion.
All right. Is there any question, or is I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? All right. Staff will be working with Woodset to get that moving forward. All right, at this time, it is just slightly after ten AM. If there's nothing else to come before the county board, we.